I have a little different handout that just gives a little more detail to some of the numbers that we're using for doing our annual report.
No, this is.
This is a little more detailed. Where should I stand?
Okay.
Don't think everybody got embarrassed. So our reporting for Community Ed goes from July to the following June, and so that's how I've set the spreadsheet up. What I wanted you to do is just have a quick snapshot of where we were last year, how that compared to the year before, and where we're going forward. So as you can see, the totals for 21, 22, we had 659. The year before, we had 665. So we're very close as far as the programming that we had. This year, 88% of our programming was for youth, and that is the direction that we want to continue to go. We did still have some classes canceled due to COVID, and just in looking even at other districts and what they're doing, a lot of them are offering online classes. If you see kind of a fuller catalog and you look closely, that's a lot of what's happening. So it seems like that trend of not having the in-person with COVID has just kind of continued and maybe even morphed a little bit into a little different way of things, people learning information. So we did do, we did do a couple Instant Pot classes that we put out on Facebook last year that people really loved. We also had an Essential Oil class that way, and then I had done some Seven Habits videos. So any questions on last year? Okay, the second half of the page then in the blue, that's kind of where we are right now. And again, this is just looking at the recording that starts in July. So these were some of the programs that we did already this summer. We will be also looking at doing another babysitter class. We always do that in May, and that gets us about 15 to 20 students. So that's something we definitely want to continue with. We're looking at possibilities of recreational gymnastics, having open gym again for one day a week. That will be different than what we've done in the past. Sewing club we've had for a couple years, and then if we have our Homework Help program has been something else that Community Ed has been running for the last few years. And then Summer Rec next June will also be on here, so that'll be another thing that will shift a little bit. So any questions?
Any, what are your thoughts on, I know you said maybe limiting that open gym for one day a week. Is that like a financial, more driven financially or participation wise? Is there?
So I'll answer that question. So open gym will be on Sundays, and they'll be on Wednesday nights. It's because of Monday night, Tuesday night, Thursday night, Friday night events in our activity area. It's very challenging to have a set pattern of Community Ed items on those evenings. So we're gonna go Sunday afternoons and then Wednesday evenings.
Saturdays.
I think that hasn't been great participation in the past. Another one is we have to watch our budget of how much we open up things to be able to offer everything we have the whole, the whole school year. So budget hasn't been that good, how much we've opened it up for like open gyms.
And is the cost primarily just driven for supervision?
Mm-hmm. Yeah. And because we don't charge anyone for open gym, it's free.
That's good. Yeah, that sounds good. I love it when the gym's open for everybody, and if there's ever opportunities to explore on, try to alleviate some of the financial things that came in the way of opening it more, let's say, Saturday and Sunday through, uh, I don't know, some sort of committee willingness to volunteer perhaps, I don't know, but.
I would say if you look at our schedule on Saturday, starting in December, we'll be very busy with youth and high school activities. When I say youth, like tournaments, things like that. So would not be consistent on a Saturday either.
Yeah, I love all of it. Years back, you know, the door was busted down and there was open gyms, seemed like every night. And it seems like the more it's open, the more it gets used because people become more familiar with it. But I understand the calendaring and the cost and the scheduling, but just encourage us to keep brainstorming our ways to open that up.
It's also open, we didn't talk about it in the mornings, before school we have open gym.
Yeah.
And that the track and the weight rooms open, and that's open to public and all our, all our students, so. And that's every day we have school. So when you think of open gym, it's Wednesday nights, Sundays, and every morning.
I'd really appreciate it if school would be, doing what it can to be open as much as it has, but I know COVID threw a wrench in a lot of stuff, so.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions?
Mary. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Nelson's not able to make it, so Mr. Court will go over the elementary and AD report.
Yeah. Okay, elementary report, looking at enrollment. It's either down to a couple students from the beginning of the year, but that's, that happens. Just because we, at the end of the school year, September 1st, we're not sure the students that are coming, if they're leaving, or if they haven't thrown a trip or anything like that, so that's always changes. So last couple students since the first day of school. A few items below that, October 7th, the first grade went to Thea's Pumpkin Patch. Fifth grade visited the recycling center and library in Fergus Falls. The kindergarten on October 14th went to Thea's Pumpkin Patch. MEA break is this Thursday and Friday. And after MEA break here, you got K through 3 grade collaboration, 4 through 6 collaboration. October 26th will also be the instructional leadership team meeting on that day. Teacher workshop will be November 7th, and then parent-teacher conferences will be on November 14th. Just reminder, at elementary, parent-teacher conferences from, will be from 12 to 6 at elementary, and at the high school will be 1 to 7. We overlap them, so then staff from each building have time to meet with their teachers of their children. Activities report, a few things there. Thank you to everyone who helped with the gala, it was a great turnout for the team and individuals being inducted into the Hall of Fame. We will not have the date for next year's gala until June. The reason is because the football schedule will be, won't be ready until next spring. So they're realigning the sections and district football, and that will be coming out next spring, and then they'll make, make the schedule after that. So that's why it's the June date. Every two years, they realign all the schools in the state of Minnesota, sections, section-wise. And for football, they're in districts. Thanks for the work to honor the 1997 state championship football team on Friday. This spring, the state high school league will put teams into new sections, a new redistrict for football. Boys soccer ended the season at Hillcrest in the first round of the playoffs. Girls soccer ended the season at Fergus Falls in the first round of playoffs. Football playoffs will start October 25th at the higher seed. It looks like our football team will have a bye, it's the last regular season game tonight. And then the schedule will come out here in the next day or two. Looks like playoffs, playoffs start next Tuesday, it looks like we'll have a bye, which means then we will play next Saturday, and that game will be at 2 o'clock, and it should be, it will be at home, because it looks like football team will be a 2 seed. Volleyball playoffs start October 26th, that'll be at the higher seed. Cross-country section is on October 28th. Cross-country sections is at Bagley. Hopefully, there will be no snow this year at Bagley. Fall play is November 11th, 12th, and 13th. Mr. Brown is directing the fall play. He is very excited for this year's play and excited about all the students that are participating. It's been going very well. Bad concert will be November 17th, and the choir concert will be November 22nd. Just remember, we will have our shell, our new shell will be up and the cloud. So we're really excited about that, that will be really nice to see that this fall and hear the sound. On the agenda tonight for the activity related is the Form A, that's from the state high school league. That is a grant that's given to schools, that schools have to apply for it, and that money goes to help students pay for activities that can't afford it. So that's kind of a nice little grant that we applied for, that helps cover that cost. Any questions? Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Ms. Janaszewski, high school report.
I'm gonna let Sylvia and Molly start, it's all right? Ellie, go on.
Yeah, so it's past Sunday, we had 14 new members inducted into MHS, and then we're happy to report that the Midwood Crop Walk raised $1,500. And then a couple weeks ago, we had many Pilgrimage Bids, band and choir students go to MSUM for Fall Honor Festival, which was a day of getting ready for a short concert.
This past week, we've had juniors and freshmen go to career fairs. One was in DL, one was in Fergus. Those are both really fun and to go to. And then SAD has also been really busy this week with Rock the Belt. We've been giving lifesavers to people who've been wearing their seat belts. And then today, we had a kind of fun assembly about mental health, which was really interesting.
Cool, a cool ass.
There's a group, a MASH unit.
The MASH unit, yeah.
MASH unit?
It was loud and lots of energy. But SAD sponsored it.
Yeah.
May I add something with our student board members? After the election, the school board association usually holds phase 1 and phase 2 trainings for school board members. And from what I understand, both of you would be eligible to attend, so if there's a training coming up, we can forward that information to you to somebody to be interested in, so it might require a little bit of travel or something that might be online. Anyway, sorry to interrupt.
Oh, that's okay. Okay, our student enrollment relatively steady. We were at 413 in September, we're at 410 in October. Ellie mentioned that it is College Knowledge Month in October here, and the goal of College Knowledge Month is just to really promote the idea of kids thinking about post-secondary. So one thing, you'll notice I'm wearing copper gear now, but we've implemented WHAM Wednesday at the high school for teachers, and it's just wear alma mater clothing on Wednesday to get kids and staff talking about post-secondary options. Mrs. Lage has been scheduling 15-minute senior meetings with all our seniors, just to encourage them to think about where they are credit-wise and then their thoughts on next year's plans. Ellie also mentioned that we had freshmen and juniors go to Fergus Falls. Well, freshmen went to Tritt Lakes, juniors to Fergus Falls for career expos. We're also looking at sending our sophomores in the next couple weeks to an expo in Fargo that we just found out about. So we're really trying to get all of those upper-level grades a chance to explore some of those options. Mid-quarter grade checks was a couple weeks ago, and then we sent out grade checks on October 13th. We are really trying to use our study hall supervisor to help with grade checks and get kids to understand where they are with their grades and catch some of those kids before we get to the end of the quarter. The girls also mentioned Minnesota Honor Society. Congratulations to our new inductees. We had Diana Escobar, Timothy Guler, Claudia Gerth, Emily Healy, Kayden Holt, Kylie Holt, Allison Jessen, Christopher Ferrier, Elizabeth Mo, Luke Soli, Ava Simpson, Molly Thornton, Stephanie Urbano, and Ellie Welch, all inducted that night, and just a big thank you to Ms. Breen for her work. We also had one of our former teachers speak and give a really nice speech to our inductees. The MASH unit was here today, SAD sponsored that. It was a really great opportunity for grade 7 through 12 to listen to some tough conversations, but also just do it in a really fun, high-energy, upbeat way. On the back here, you'll see I have Build Learning, Build Trust, Build Success. That's kind of our theme this year at the high school, so I want to highlight a few things that we have done this month. Mr. Larson, FFA group, went to Minneapolis. He said he took three dairy students, three kids interested in dairy, to an event there. Mr. Howgud chaperoned some other ones to Frezey on the same day. CJ Hall came in to speak to Mr. Johnson's class about the election and voting. Our honors band and choirs went to MSUM. We had 19 juniors take the P set. Mr. Satterly organized the NIVI Water Walk presentation for his art students, and then we also had crisis prevention training for our special ed staff earlier in September. That's all I have. Thank you. Any questions?
Oh, none of my questions, but it's for Sylvia and Ellie. So Sylvia, you didn't go because you're a senior, but Ellie, you went to the career expo in First Falls. Did you think it was a pretty good variety of career booths or?
Yeah, so like first, we went to M State and kind of got a tour of the campus, an idea of what that looked like, and then we went to the gym, and there's a ton of different career booths, which were all set up nice. And then we had a few people speak to us in the auditorium about everything, about their job and kind of what they do, so that was really interesting too. So there's a lot of variety of different things.
Good. It's nice to see the different grades and whether it's freshmen or juniors, so it's awesome to see. Sounds like sophomores get that same opportunity at some point. Seniors have that opportunity, or is that once you're a senior, you've seen enough career I suppose?
That's a good question. I don't know if we have seniors.
We had that panel a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah.
Which I thought was really good, I think. You know, going to a career fair, it can be like a little timid to talk to people, reluctant to go up to someone. I think we should be sure to have that again next year. Good experience.
Thank you.
Thanks. Mr. Martinez, finance report.
Okay, pretty good operational month for the district. We closed the month of September. So the report that we have up in front, we started an investment account with $6.3 million. We received 954 and aid from the state. We withdrew 822,000 to cover our expenditures, so we ended our investment account with $6.4 million. Beginning balance, you see that we have negative cash, but our account automatically pulls from our investment. Total deposits, we had 1.1 million dollars. 882 of that, or 822 was from the investment pool, so you see that there. Accounts payable, 736,000. Total payroll, 404,000. Few adjustment entries that'll go on page 2, but at the end of the day, we had a cash on hand of negative 163, but then again, the account replenishes and pulls automatically. Page 2, just a couple of journal entries that I had to make sure the books balance. It had to do with the timing on, we had, we did passive transaction around county books, but then unfortunately didn't show in the bank account until the following month, so I pretty much had to undo that on particular payable. Then the rest of the pages, really it's all of our payables again. Like I always say, if you have any questions on the payables, please let me know. I'm more than happy to share more information. Coming up on Big Rocks, we're in terms of the business office. October is when we receive our first half of our levy payment, which is pretty good. So that will come on October 27th, we'll get a big chunk of our levy into our checking account. But then, of course, the state gets pretty smart, and they don't give us any aid for the month of November. So it's always good to have that good, healthy reserve. Other business items really in the agenda that we see there is just the renewal of the Head Start lease. We rented the space in our elementary building. Good partnership with them, they've been there for quite a bit of time, and it's a good, good partnership because they're future Vikings. That's all I have for you guys for the Treasurers' report. Like I said, very city month, not a lot of surprises. Do you guys have any questions about the fiscal report for the Head Start lease?
All right, Mary.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Court. Okay, trailhead update. We met this afternoon with representatives from the county and city. We talked about the design of the building, which would be again up at Johnson Martin Field. And we talked about the design, and then we talked about the budget, and kind of like what are we thinking of the cost and how the three parties would work together to pay for the building. So started that discussion, and that will continue over the next few weeks. Again, we are looking at a timeline of building that building. If it all works out, we can make things work, starting in June, and then it'll be done sometime in August of next summer. Safe routes to school grant, we're working with the city, so we're working with the city on this, and working with members from the West Central Initiative that, and then the Safe Routes to School is looking at ways that we can provide safer routes for students coming to school and leaving school. And we did an observation here this week, we did it in the morning, and we had people placed around the high school, at the elementary school, and then in town. What we're doing is observing students riding their bikes, walking, and then students driving vehicles, and we're just doing a tally to see how many are walkers, how many are bikers and on that day. This coming week, the next thing that we're gonna do is teachers in the elementary and high school will have a questionnaire that they will complete, it's a survey, and they'll ask on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, students that roll their bikes, walk, things like that on there, and then we'll complete that. We're gathering this information, and once, what we'll do with this information, starting about January, February, is then we'll apply for different grants, but we need this information to apply for those grants together, so that's why we're gathering this city fall. So good group of people working together from the community, the city, and the school. Enrollment, in September, we started out on day one, we had 841 students. Right now, we are at 833 students. We knew that number would change in the beginning of the year because we don't know who is all coming and going, so total number is at 833. Educational benefits, we talked about those, those are the free and reduced forms that we have families complete. We do receive funding, so we encourage all the families to fill them out. Just a reminder that if they fill them out, they get a free activity pass. So we have a committee, it is Ms. Sanchez, at the high school, and this is regarding the elementary, representing each building, that help gather those applications, and they did a great job of organizing and getting a majority of forms from the families, so. And that was for K-12, so they did a good job. Viking Gala, we talked about the Viking Gala, it was a good turnout, and thank you to all the people that helped make that night a success. School board agenda items, I do have a few items here on the agenda that I'd like just to talk about. And the consent items, the resignations, we've had a few resignations here over the last few weeks that we need approved and then a couple leave of absence. We did, we had a couple hires replacing some positions. What is the senior high math with Mrs. Petznick? We want to thank her for all her work with the senior high math team. Mrs. Petznick has put many hours into that math team, and she'll continue to do junior high, and then we're recommending to hire Mr. Knorr as a senior high math team coach. I also recommend to you to hire Mr. Kirkwood as a junior high girls' basketball coach, and then recommend to approve the hire of Celeste L as a long-term special ed para-professional here. Also recommending to approve the lane changes for the staff that qualify for a lane change. And then the WCMCA is the Head Start, that's just an agreement, that's a yearly agreement that we do that we're asking you to approve. And then I believe there's one thing that Mr. Carter needs to talk about, that's the special ed, correct?
Yes.
At the very bottom of business items, and you'll talk about that. Also in the business items is approving the first reading of policy 522, and approving, and that's approving the first and second reading of 522, and then approving the first reading of policy 722. The reason we can approve the first and second reading of policy 522 because there's not a lot of changes to that policy. Okay? Approve the Community Ed report, Ms. Hunter talked about that, and then in the activities report, we talked about the state high school league foundation application for approval there, and that's to help cover costs for students that can't pay for activity fees. Couple items coming up, MEA break Thursday and Friday this week. We have teacher workshop coming up, and then high school and elementary parent-teacher conferences on November 14th. Any questions? Okay, there you go. All right. Thanks.
Well, we'll move on to consent items. Item A, approved board meeting minutes, September 21st, 2022, regular meeting. Item B, financial claims, September bills. C, Treasurers' report. D, accept donations. We have boys and girls soccer, $200, Alvin Kaval. Boys and girls cross country, $200, Alvin Kaval. Elementary supplies, $350, North and Menial Lutheran Church. PRHS scholarship fund, $50 in memory of Earl Carlson from George Gordon. Student accounts, $80 from Laura Clemmick. Student accounts, $100, Deborah and Everett Ballard. Viking boutique, $80, Laura Clemmick. Also Viking boutique, $17.01 from the class of 89. Viking boutique, $50, Grove Lake Lutheran Church. Viking boutique, $100, Deborah and Everett Ballard. Item A, personnel, approve the resignation of Felicia Ross as para-professional at Viking Elementary. Approve the resignation of Elisa Rustand as para-professional at Viking Elementary. Approve the resignation of Daniel Garcia Juarez as full-time custodian at PRHS. Approve the resignation of Elisa Peznik as senior high math team coach. Approve the leave of absence for Ashley Olson as special education para at Viking Elementary from October 24th, 2022 to December 16th, 2022. Approve the leave of absence for Magdalena Salazar as special education para at Viking Elementary from approximately November 2nd through December 15th, 2022. Proven hire Logan Nor as senior high math team coach. Prove the hire of Bo Kirkwood as junior high girls' basketball coach. Prove the hire of Celeste L as long-term special education para professional substitute at Viking Elementary. Prove the following lane change requests. I'm just gonna read off that there's lane change requests here, Katherine Albright, Whitney Gablin, Rablin, I'm sorry, Toni Johnson, Logan Nor, Abigail Mooney, and Colleen Schaefer. Item G, approve the 2022, 2023 collaborative agreement with Cent- Item G, approve the 2022, 2023 collaborative agreement with WCMCA Head Start. That was the whole page. Entertained a motion?
Entertained a motion. The consent items.
Motion by Ann, we have a second.
Second.
Second by Molly. Any discussion on the consent items? Hearing no discussion on the consent items. All those in favor of approving them signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, same. Consent items carried. Business items, approve the first and second reading of policy 522. Policy can rule that today, right?
Yeah.
And 522, just to summarize it.
522, there's minor changes in 522. Most of the changes are removing the abbreviated references and updated the title, name changes of the references. So they're pretty much spelling them all out on the policy of 522.
Do we have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the first and second reading of policy 522.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Greg. Any discussion on approving the first and second reading of policy 522? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of approving it, signify by saying aye. 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 Those opposed, same. Carries. Now approve the first reading of policy 722. Should we motion a second and then explain the changes?
Yeah, okay. I'll move to approve the first reading of policy 722.
Okay. Motion by Greg. Second. Second by Molly. Okay, well, for discussion as far as changes.
Yeah. For policy 722, public data and data subject requests, reasonable idea is we need to have a first reading only is because there's a lot of information that has been added to this regarding, it's more of a detailed process for data requests. So a lot more detail is what's been added in this, in this policy.
Okay. Any discussion?
I think part of our policy discussion included just seeking some guidance and clarity too as to who the representatives and authorities would be with regard to processing those requests. So I thought we had a good, good discussion on that.
Any other discussion? Hearing no additional discussion, all those in favor of approving first reading of policy 722, signify by saying aye. 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 Those opposed, same. Motion carries. Item C, approve the community education report. And that was the presentation Ms. Hunter had brought to us.
I make a motion to approve the community education report.
Motion by Brenda. Second by Ann. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of approving the community education report, signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, same. Community education report carries. Next one is a resolution. MD, approve the resolution of Form A, the application to the Minnesota State High School League Foundation. So we have a motion and a second. Is this something we do every year?
Yeah.
Okay. So we'll do a motion and a second and then I'll send the resolution, I'll...
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution of Form A application to the MSHSL Foundation.
Okay. Motion by Ann. Do we have a second?
My second.
I don't know if this is a resolution, a governing board supporting Form A application of Minnesota State High School League Foundation. Whereas the Minnesota State High School League Foundation was formed to provide support for Minnesota high school youth to participate in athletics and fine arts. Whereas the governing board of Pelican Rapids Independent School District 548 recognizes the value of student participation in extracurricular activities. And whereas the Minnesota State High School League Foundation is offering grants and funding to assist schools in recognizing, promoting, and funding extracurricular participation by high school students in athletic and fine arts programs. Therefore, we have resolved that the governing board of Pelican Rapids Independent School District 548 support the school's application of Minnesota State High School League Foundation for a Form A grant to offset student activity fees. So this is a resolution. Molly, how do you resolve?
Yes.
Yes. Ann?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Yes. Resolution carries. Item E, approve the amended joint powers agreement with the special education cooperative. So I am on the special ed cooperative board with seven other school districts besides Pelican Rapids. We're based out of Fergus Falls. Corv also attends the meetings. So right now they have a quarterly meeting for everybody, including Mr. Corv and all the other districts. And then there's a executive committee that meets monthly. So this bylaw change, what it includes is having superintendent representation and alternating basis to be included with the executive board. So more of the day-to-day operations, you know, kind of spread it apart. Is that how you kind of understand it?
Yeah.
So that's generally the reason for the change. It's been gone through by Ms. Hastings from Pemberton, gone through the bylaw change with us. So if you look at the last page, it kind of gives an alternate, an alternating rotation for this executive committee. And it looks like Mr. Corv will be on it for a couple of years and I'll get to sit out and just go to the general and then it'll swap off. So. Any questions or something I need to clarify better? So basically what we would need to do is each district has to approve it at their local level through a motion. And then at the next special ed cooperative meeting, we'd approve it there. So, so we need approval for each board before they go to the special ed cooperative.
I'll move to approve the amended joint powers agreement with the special education cooperative.
Motion by Greg. Do we have a second? Second by Ann. Any discussion on the amended joint powers agreement? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of approving the Greg's resolution, signify by saying aye. Our motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same. Here it is. Okay, upcoming meetings, November 16th, regular meeting, 6:00 PM. December 14th, regular meeting, 6:00 PM. Will that include the tax, truth and taxation?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Is that the same time?
Uh, right before it.
Right before it. At 6:00. Okay. That's it. So I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Okay. Motion by Brenda. We have a second.
My second.
Okay. Second by Molly. Any discussion on adjourned? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of adjourned, signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, same for adjourned. Thanks, everybody.